Alex, I think the best place for us to start this conversation is to hear from you about what led you to decide to run for office. I don't believe you've had much thus far of involvement in the city government and any city volunteer position. So we're curious about what inspired your candidacy when you made that decision and what you're hoping to achieve.
Yes, thanks for having me. It's been great interacting with you, Jocelyn, Janadi and Tom so far. I decided to run in February, March timeframe. When I talked to a few community members and everyone has been encouraging me to run, I'm running since I have. I love Palo Alto. I'm concerned about the future of Palo Alto and I would like to make an impact on housing, climate change, public safety, and I'm supporting small businesses as well.
So you've lived here a little over two decades, I guess. What part of town do you live in? What neighborhood do you live in?
I live in community center since 2010.
Okay. And so over the course of the last 20 years, how have you seen Palo Alto change for the better and for the worse in your view?
That's a great question. I I've seen a lot of changes over the last 20 years, especially when it comes to demographics. The Palo Alto has been always diverse, but I think it's more diverse than than ever now. I believe 35% of Palo Alto consists of immigrants. And that's great for our community. I also like the sense of the community. That's one of the reasons I moved to Palo Alto. However, I believe Palo Alto has been changing over the last few years when it comes to public safety and I'm a bit concerned about that. And I truly believe that we need to improve public safety in our own town.
Alex, when you're talking about public safety, I know you had an incident with your son, I believe, his bicycle. Was that part of the spur of you deciding to run? Was that experience formative?
Yes, I mean, it's been two to three years now. Oh, nice cat there. It's been two to three years now since every time I open Nextdoor or other platforms or so, I see nothing but crimes every other day. And it's really depressing. I also talk to business owners in downtown and it's really also depressing to see, you know, shelves at CVS being locked for $15 items. Stores like RealReal or so, they have to hire a security guard, you know, to guard the store. So things like that prompted me to look into public safety. I talked to numerous people and the feedback has been very consistent and the same. We really need to improve public safety. I also reached out to Dennis Burns, the previous police chief. He's actually endorsing me and we are on the same page when it comes to a few things that we could improve public safety on. And I can elaborate more if you would like to.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and do that?
Yeah, so obviously we have staffing issue. We could allocate funds in order to hire, I believe, seven officers and two dispatchers. I think Andrew, the new police chief agrees to this issue as well. And I also believe that we could introduce technology. I also think that Andrew is looking into that as we speak, mainly license plate readers. I believe it's perplexing to me that someone commits a crime in Stanford Shopping Center, drives through Palo Alto for 20 minutes or so to 101 and we would not be able to catch any of these guys. Actually, just the other day, you guys had an article on an unoccupied house that was burglarized in old Palo Alto. I mean, same thing, that guy gets in the car, gets away and no one is able to catch these individuals. I truly believe that technology like license plate readers, obviously if it's supported by the community, it would be a great addition to the tools that our police department could use. I also was told that other cities surrounding us are using that technology. And I believe every single other continent or so is using the same technology for security purpose. So there is no reason for us not to look into that. And I believe we should be able to get community support when it comes to technology in general. Also, we could use some AI maybe to to have a more efficient scheduling when it comes to shifts, when it comes to officers. I think the AI technology could certainly improve in that department as well.
Alex, I know that a big issue for you is housing development and that you have referenced your own background in real estate and real estate development as a key qualifier for you to serve on the council. I wonder if you could describe what your professional background is and give us the sort of the foundation for why you would bring that expertise to the council.
Yeah, Bill, you know very well and we would have to agree that 90% of issues that are being brought at the city council level are really land use and finance related issues. So if you were to be in charge of hiring city council members, I hope that you would be looking to someone, you know, with the land use expertise. I do have hands-on experience when it comes to land use in general and finance in a sense that I'm a business owner and I've been in real estate for 12, 14 years now. Not only on the residential side, but also involved in some projects where commercial sites were converted into multifamily. So I've seen it all from acquiring land, entitling, building and so forth. I truly believe that this hands-on experience is very different from experience that others might have when it comes to sitting on committees where they don't have skin in the game. And Palo Alto, to be honest, you know, is not set up to to be in the driver's seat as of now. And I really believe that we would have to be more proactive and we really have to get into a driver's seat when it comes to handling housing, the housing element and other issues. We really have to learn from other entities such as Stanford where they have five to 10 people in a department called Real Estate Development Office. You know, guess what? We don't have that at the city level. We have billions of dollars of assets that we have to manage and we really need a real estate development office. We, I cannot emphasize enough how important is to have the in-house real estate expertise. So that's precisely what I'm bringing at the table.
Can you cite a couple of examples of what you're referring to where you worked with redeveloping a commercial building to residential?
Yeah, so I was involved as an equity partner and also as a consultant for a few projects in Mountain View Los Altos area where we converted unutilized commercial spaces into multifamily buildings, 28 units. Also, a unit aside was actually entitled for a hotel in Mountain View. I was doing consulting for that project as well. And I, one of my focuses, I would say, when it comes to, if I were to join the team, I would be analyzing the assets that the city would own, dormant assets that we could convert in high-producing assets, especially when it comes to development and addressing the housing element. I truly believe that we need to look at larger projects and to really be in a driver's seat again instead of looking for infill projects and being at the mercy of developers.
Alex, maybe after we're done here, could you send us something that details, that just provides the information about those two projects in Mountain View and Los Altos?
Certainly.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I think
Yeah, go ahead, Justin.
Oh, just some follow-ups there. I think there's some things to sort of unpack. The first is, I'm trying to figure out if you think that when you get, if you were to get on council, that you would, your action would be to advocate for the creation of a development like a real estate unit or a real estate division within the staff? Or if you could actually see opportunities where you would get hands-on when developments come before the council and then that would be the way that your expertise would best, you know, help the city? Is it one or the other? Is it both? Can you explain that to me?
Yes, I believe that would be both. We are looking at projects like the high-speed internet, you know, and that would be a $143 million project. And how many people do we plan on allocating for that specific project? I guess dozens. Then we have the housing element, you know, which is a $10 billion project. We have 6,086 units to be built, roughly at 1.5, 1.6 mil a unit. That's a $10 billion project. So how many people do we plan on actually, you know, allocating for a project like the housing element? To me, I think it's essential to, again, to be proactive and to really staff appropriately, you know, for projects that make sense. And obviously, this is a state mandated thing when it comes to housing elements. So we have no choice, but we implement that. So I I truly believe we need a real estate development office. Just take a look at Stanford. They have five to 10 people in that department, truly real estate professionals. Everything they touch turns into gold. They really have a system in place, you know, and there's no reason for us not to be able to replicate that. We actually, I had a Zoom meeting with Gina Snyder and Suetah, the government affair person within Stanford. And they felt the same, actually. They, you know, actually, they didn't say that, but I was reading between the lines that they really have such a department in place and we don't, you know. I, you know, I believe they might be feeling they're in a different league, you know, they speak different languages, you know. When it comes dealing with Stanford, with Palo Alto, and obviously we have to partner up with them on so many aspects. They are dealing with people in our city council and frankly, you know, most of these candidates, you know, and don't have the land use expertise, you know. And no wonder things are not getting done. And yes, to refer to my role when it comes to city council, yes, I truly believe that my real estate slash land use expertise is, you know, a huge plus. I truly believe that I could contribute. And also when it comes to my financial background, also if you think long-term, people that got analytical skills in the current city council, mainly council member Phil Sett and council member Tanaka, they will be terminated in two years from now. So I truly believe we would need someone to kind of carry the load going forward when it comes to financial slash analytical skills.
And do you feel that there have been some development opportunities that the city has missed because of this lack of expertise? Have the developers been asking for too much on certain projects? Do you have some examples of what you've seen as this lack of expertise?
Yeah, I mean, I can talk for days when it comes to real estate in general, especially development opportunities that I believe Palo Alto has missed or mishandled. Don't even know where to start. We have so many city-owned properties that I believe we could convert from dormant assets into high-producing ones. I'm not sure if you have seen recently my full-page ad on a potential proposal to look into our own airport. We are owning actually about 1,500 acres on the other side of 101 between the golf course, the airport, the Bixi Park and the Baylands. Palo Alto Airport consists of about 100 acres and my proposal, that was actually not my idea. It was actually brought by a friend of mine, Bob Wenzler, a few months ago. And I've been looking into that and I've been tweaking it. And now I came up with a proposal of potentially allocating about 60 acres of the 100 of the airport site only to market units or mixed use. 20 acres to to affordable units and the rest of it, 20 acres to open space. If you take 75% dwellings per acre when it comes to density, I truly believe we can end up with 4,500 units when it comes to market trade, about 1,500 units when it comes to affordable. And we have 20 acres left for open spaces, schools and so forth. This is just one of the opportunities that I believe we missed big time. It balances the traffic, you know, if you were to add more units on this side of the town, we have the same Embarcadero and Oregon Expressway, they will take the hit. I truly believe we have the opportunity to plan ahead. We can actually implement that in phases. We have no neighborhoods surrounding us or so. So it's not like we destroyed the character of the neighborhoods. I'm all about projects that make sense and I truly believe that we should preserve the character of Palo Alto. And I, you know, it will have a huge impact when it comes to climate. And I think it will be a great project and I would like to get that conversation started. Other opportunities would be partnering up with Stanford. Based on my conversations with the Stanford staff, they are really open to look into the lower section of the research park and also Stanford Shopping Center. It looks like Simon Properties is willing to come to the table to talk about potentially redeveloping the whole Stanford Shopping Center. I would imagine that shopping center to be more like a Santana Road type of shopping center with retail and restaurants and you know, bars and coffee shops, live music and so forth on the first floor and then four or five levels of multifamily on top. I mean, I think they are super incentivized as well. We, they are sitting on actually an absolute shopping center. All of my friends that go to Stanford actually go there to return items to Newman Marcus and Maces. I haven't been there in 10, 15 years when it comes to shopping there. So I truly believe that's a great opportunity. And we will be converting roughly a $1 billion asset into, you know, six or $7 billion asset. And our city will take advantage when it comes to property taxes that are coming our way from that property. On this, I did miss the point that I want to make in regards to the airport project. Only if we lease those 60 acres to a developer that will take over when it comes to that project at 6% lease fee for the value of $12 million an acre, we would add about $43 million to our city budget. And on top of that, we have property taxes from market and affordable. And I believe we would be exceeding $50 million when it comes to city budget as well. So that's a huge plus for construction, yes.
And just to clarify, the airport would no longer be there, correct? You could just do away with the airport and that land?
That's a fair assumption, yes.
Okay. And what about sea level rise, Alex? Developing out on the baylands, it already is subject to a lot of tidal action.
That's actually a great opportunity to actually address that, you know. So you have, when it comes to building, I believe you have the opportunity, Bill, to address that, to have to block basically, you know, the water that will come our way. Otherwise, to your point, you know, some of that land might disappear over the next few years. So that's a great opportunity as well.
So part of redeveloping the airport into housing would be constructing levees to hold back the water?
That's correct, yes.
And you'd engineer around liquefaction problems?
Can I repeat that, engineering around what?
Liquefaction issues?
Yes, yes, I believe it's a, I think we are so far advanced when it comes to technology, we should be able to handle all of the above.
Okay.
And I also want to mention another opportunity, going back to Jocelyn's question. I would like to add city-owned parking lots. I talked to Peter Baltay a couple of times over coffee recently. And he actually provided the city with a comprehensive plan when it comes to addressing those parking lots without sacrificing the current parking situation. And he was proposing actually about 1,000 units on all city parking lots, mainly retail slash office or so on the ground floor and four or five levels of multifamily on top, all affordable. And that will bring about, I believe, $7.7 million to the city budget as well. And also, I truly believe that that would be a great opportunity for the city to look into retail, especially close to downtown university in California. So we could actually subsidize some of retail stores in order to revive our downtown as well.
To switch the subject, if that's okay with Jocelyn. You were among the candidates, I think all but one endorsed this idea of converting California Avenue to a permanent plaza, basically. And I'm wondering, given your strong inclination to support small business in the community, if you've consulted with the small businesses that are on California Avenue and received their input on that idea and what they've told you, if so?
Yes, I believe I might be the only candidate actually that is being supported by small businesses. So I talked to, gosh, 50 of those small businesses in downtown and California, on California Avenue as well. I talked to John Goldman, Charlie Waiters, you know, from the Chamber of Commerce. And I talked to so many small business owners, the different feedback when it comes to University Avenue versus California Avenue. I think your question was pertinent to California only. So I believe California Avenue is just easier to to address, you know, first of all, it's not, you know, connecting 101 to Stanford and so forth. I truly believe it will be a good candidate to keep it close. Yes, I did consult with maybe a dozen of small businesses on California Avenue, including the owners of Terun, Italico, Cali, La Boheme and, you know, Printer's Cafe and others. And I believe we have an opportunity to create a center where we can bring people for multiple purposes. Instead of going in and out and, you know, to a restaurant and for a quick lunch or dinner or so, I truly believe we could look into bringing more businesses that will keep people there for a number of hours, for maybe two to three hours. You know, a karate class, you know, let's say two kids could spend their two or three hours, you know, they could go, you know, the kids could go to a karate class, you know, she, you know, she could have, she could get a haircut. They could grab, you know, coffee or lunch, you know, afterwards. So that's kind of how I envision actually California Avenue. And it's pretty much in line with the vision of Chamber of Commerce as well. And yes, going back to the question of the feedback related to those small business owners. Yes, the restaurant owners really, really like the idea of keeping the California Avenue close. It gives us a very European feel. Can we improve that? Certainly. Yes, there are so many ways to improve that, but I think that's a good start.
Yeah, I have no doubt that the restaurants would love the idea. I was speaking of the current non-restaurant businesses on the street who have been pretty vocal about getting that street reopened.
You have plenty of, you have plenty of parking and I don't believe that really driving on that street is really driving, you know, more business to those stores. Especially with the new parking structure there, I think it's super easy to go there, park and just walk around, if anything. The more you walk, actually, the more opportunities, you know, would be to end up with an impulse buy. So I, I think California Avenue, it's a good candidate to be close, yes. But again, I mean, we really have to listen to to the community and mainly to the majority of the business owners there. So, yes.
The other follow-up that I wanted to make to the comments you made at the debate had to do with the Fiber to the Home project. You're, I think, the only candidate that rather vigorously opposed that idea. And I wonder if you could explain your concerns about it?
Yes, so I believe that that is being addressed by the private sector, you know, fairly well. I don't think that should be a priority. I think we have so many other priorities. It's nice to have, don't get me wrong, but I don't think that should be a priority. When it comes to subsidizing some of that at the city level, when it comes to a specific sector of the population, I fully support that, but I don't believe that adding more on city's plate is the way to handle that. We have so many projects that are not going super well at the city level and I mean, why adding more? And it's also difficult to keep up with the technology, you know. These companies such as Verizon, AT&amp;T and so forth, they have, they have so much technology behind them and expertise. They have, they they have so much technology behind them and and expertise. Decades of expertise, you know, and to keep up with, you know, this technology changes extremely rapidly, so you know, so I I don't see. That being very well handled at the city level. Yep.
So Alex, I I noticed that on your website, one of the themes that you brought up. A a couple of different times was that you want to advocate for a united, decisive and efficient council, so. Two questions, one is, I'm guessing that means that you think they are not those three things right now? Could could you talk a little bit about where your thinking comes from there, and then how how would you bring about all these great qualities of, you know, unity and decisiveness and efficiency?
Yeah, that's a great question, I I. Truly believe that one of the. The the things that the city council member should have in place is to 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 be a good listener and also to be a bridge builder. And I I I do think I have. Those in place and I. Been talking to to to. So many people in regards to. What's going on at the city council level and pretty much everyone, you know, mentioned that city council is more like a five-one-one. And and it shouldn't be that way, you know, I think I think we are. Here to serve the community. And to do what's best for the community regardless of. Your principles or or. A political party behind you or or so or endorsers or so. At the end, I think we are here to serve the community and that should be a common goal that all city council members should have. And. I I believe that a more balanced approach when it comes to everything, especially housing. Would lead us to a more united and efficient city council. And I'm hoping that I could bring that expertise. To the table.
So if I'm hearing you right, you're saying that. It's not so much that you as council member would somehow. Corral the other council members into unity, but that you represent. This idea of trying to be unified and. Being one out of seven, you would have that philosophy that you you bring with yourself.
Yeah, I believe over time. As 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 city council members are being added to the. To the equation, I think we will end up with a more. Balanced approach, city council members. And I truly believe that community, that our community will benefit from that. I. I don't. Believe that we should have. New members or existing members with specific ideology in place to 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 lead. The city council, I truly believe. That actually, I think that's a liability, when 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 I see. Candidates or even, you know, current council members being endorsed by. Huge political parties and 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 politicians and and so forth, I I I think that. It's a liability. And also, I don't think that you could serve the community and also the political party behind. That's why I'm actually, I'm committed to a non-partisanship focus. And. And since our. Residents are actually the core of of this commu- of our community, I'm actually dedicated and committed to serve our community.
Alex, how how would you respond to a resident who had concerns that. Given your background in real estate, real estate development as a as a. Real estate agent. That you would in essence be the advocate and and representative for the development community and rather than being. An impartial. Assistant to the council to to navigate through these proposals. You would end up advocating for development, the development interests.
So if elected, I would have the fiduciary duty to represent the city and the community. And there's no question about that, so I I truly believe that the city is. Should be grateful to have the real estate slash land use expertise in-house. And I would be using that expertise to. To actually negotiate and deal with sophisticated developers in order to. To. End up with. With more BMRs for the city, you would, you know, with a a better design or so. The the developers have resources behind them, you know, just like Stanford or so, you know, we don't, you know, so we really need that in-house expertise and I truly believe that. The residents would see that as a huge. Plus, since the real estate expertise is is really needed, I mean, I talked to. I talked to the property manager of Alta Local just yesterday, you know, you you very well know the project at the corner of Page Mill and the Communal Real, right?
Yep.
Fifty-seven units, twelve of them, about twenty percent of the of the units being affordable, right? The affordable aspect is actually. A bit of a joke. It's, you know, those units are actually. For the moderate income level. In fact, one thirty to one forty percent of AMI, you know, the area median income. And a one bedroom there. Market rate is being rented at forty-six hundred. Versus forty-four hundred when it comes to affordable units. Twenty, so twelve of those units are available and only one actually has been rented through the affordable pool. I mean, it's a five percent reduction when it comes to market rate to afford a bit, you know, affordable pool. I also heard some comments of. Either candidates or or current city council members saying that. That project was more like a pilot type of project, more like an experiment, you know, for Palo Alto. I'm. Not sure we are in a position to experimenting with Palo Alto's future and and when we have. Six thousand units to be added over the next four year, eight years, so. That's a perfect example of a project that I would not have approved. As it was approved, so if I were to be on the council, I would not have approved that project based on. The affordability. Level. And we really need to add. Units to the affordable pool when it comes to very low income and low income. Mainly thirty to fifty percent AMI and fifty to eighty percent AMI. And that should be the focus, not really adding. Units that will be rented for forty-four hundred. In in a middle of. That big intersection and. You know, polluted, I mean, you have. Cars twenty-four seven in front of those buildings. I I don't think that project was a successful pilot project.
I don't believe they made any promises about what the actual rents would be, so are you are you saying that the. Affordable units which they committed to to that category are just going empty because. The way they've priced it, they can't get anybody that actually falls into that. That affordable, the medium income. Category to rent it at that price, is that's what, is that what's happening?
So it's a five percent reduction, right, you know?
Right.
From, you know, forty-six hundred to forty-four hundred, so.
That's not, that's their, that was their choice, right? The price.
The 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 price is being dictated by by. By the affordable. Formula. It's not their choice, they cannot rent that for fifty-six hundred if they choose to, you know, they are limited to a specific dollar amount. That's being handled by by agreements between the developer and the city. They have that agreement in place and that agreement says that the the there's those twelve units should be rented for. One thirty to one forty percent of AMI. And that equates to forty-four hundred for the one bedroom.
And they can't rent them.
They rented one out of the twelve and I was told that. And I'm not sure even sure if that's actually legal, that the other units are being rented to. Non-affordable. You know, qualified families at the affordable rate.
We'll have to look into that.
Yeah, so, okay, so that one of the things that that the city is really, really missing is. Enforcing. Things. And this is actually one of them. Another one that I I could dive into, and I'm not sure if that would be brought up later on. Would be ADUs. So I had the two Zoom meetings with Jonathan Bate last week and actually three hours ago as well. And we added about. Anywhere from thirty-six units in two thousand eighteen to eighty-nine last year, so. An average of, I don't know, forty to fifty per year, I would say. And the funny thing is that th- those ADUs. And most people that I talked to agree to, I mean, seven sixty, seventy percent of those ADUs are. Probably used as home offices. Gyms, storage spaces or so, and no one is really enforcing it. Planning mentioned that they don't even have actually the. Anything in place in order to enforce, you know, basically the use of the ADUs. And 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 we can't those actually units against the housing element, so. I'm not sure if I would be super happy if I were to be the neighbor next door to an ADU with a. Twelve-foot, you know, wall, you know, next to my property and, you know. Based on a statement that, you know, rules and that place would be used as a storage. So I, he's one of those things that. Yeah, the city could do to. Could do a lot better when it comes to that. And that, going back to your high-speed internet, you know, project, I mean. Yeah, just imagine.
We're out of time here, but I want to just run past just a couple of quick questions, if you will, if you had been on the council when Castelaya. The Castelaya project came up for its final approval and vote. Would you have supported the the so-called compromise that the council had reached? Or would you have taken a different approach?
I I believe I would be listening a bit more to to our community and also I I believe that I should be, I would be looking more into mitigating the impact. On the environment before I would. Make up my mind, I. As as any other huge projects or so, we have impacts on on our neighborhoods and environment. And. I I believe we should be looking to mitigating that impact prior to making up our minds.
So you would have opposed the final motion that came before the council?
I would look into improving that before I would approve it, yes.
Okay, and then the other question I had was, do you have a position on. Attempting to negotiate the removal of the binding arbitration agreement in our union, our police union contract?
Yeah, I I don't have a. A a firm position of that, but I I truly believe that. The. The community members are agreeing with that and. I I believe I would support that as well.
You say you, what community members are you referring to?
Community members that I I've been talking to.
Okay. Just in your casual inter- interactions with community members?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so I. Yeah, I I believe that's that's needed to take place and I also. I I agree that we should. Be grateful that the 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 radio encryption got removed as well. That was something that the community members are. Happy to have that in place.
Yeah, as are we. I think Jadi has one police-related question that he wanted to get in here.
And I'm surprised that gray separation on other issues didn't come up.
Well, we just don't have time for everything, unfortunately.
But we do, we do have your answers in the survey in great separation, so.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. I just wanted to ask you about fair and impartial policing, it's been a big topic since twenty twenty, since the George Floyd. Marches and stuff, do you think Palo Alto does a good job in making sure its officers are policing in a fair and unbiased manner? And if not, what more do you think the city can do?
I truly believe that. Andrew and his team are doing a great job when it comes to that and I'm also in favor of introducing technology. Which is cheaper than actually adding the staff as well and. That will address, you know, some of the concerns that you just mentioned.
What technology would make policing more fair and unbiased?
I I would say any technology, since technology would not see. Color of anyone's skin or so, I think technology would be very straightforward and. And. Like I mentioned before, license place readers, AI technology when it comes to. Improving the efficiency of the shifts of the officers, I think that would be a great plus.
Thank you.
Justin, anything? Any final things from you?
Um, no, I think that's, that's good.
All right, Alex, thank you very much for being here, it's a great discussion and we wish you good luck.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.